All right, thank you for joining us tonight. Especially our later hour, where everyone pays supper tonight. I'll now call our meeting to order. I do not have my gavel, but we will raise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance through the Bible of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, thank you. Sorry, so sorry. I hope we said that there was my fault. All right, we will move ahead into our consent agenda for this evening. I have your motion to approve the consent agenda. Justice Brazil, their second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we will call both Justice Brazil?
Aye.
Justice here?
Aye.
Justice, your name is Dick Rom?
Aye.
Justice your office?
Aye.
Motion here. Got it. All right. So next on our agenda is our public comment portion of today's evening. And then we have four speakers, so if there's anything you would like to provide as a handout to the board, your own to bring out forward at this time, otherwise I will call whose seating and who is next up, so you can be prepared. Our first speaker this evening is Kevin Wright. First speaker is Kevin.
It's good to see everybody this evening. I kind of like the hour a little better. I got supper before I got here. I was reading a little bit this evening out of a patriotic bible. There's a lot of bibles out there, and there's some that talk a lot about our founding fathers and stuff, but this one, there's a couple of things that stuck out to me. It's amazing in a time when such a concerted effort is underway to erase the role of God and faith in America's public life. Our nation's capital, Washington DC, is filled with Christian religious symbols and towering buildings and monuments as inviting evidence of God's role in America's heritage. From the halls of Congress to the monuments to nearly every landmark building, biblical and religious quotations and images are inscribed and preserved as an official testimony to the true place of God has in our nation's birthright and history. The US Capitol and the House chamber is the inscription "In God We Trust." Also, in the House chamber above the gallery floor stands the marble relief of Moses, surrounded by 22 other lawgivers. At the east entrance to the Senate Chamber of the Words and New It Coepedus, I'm not sure if I said that right, but anyway, which is Latin for "He has favored our undertakings." The words "In God We Trust" are also written over the southern entrance. And the rotunda is a painting of the baptism of Pocahontas and also the embarkation of the pilgrims that shows the pilgrims praying on shipboard led by William Brewster. Clarion is seen in the open bible in the words, the New Testament, according to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. The words "God with us" are inscribed in the sail of the ship. The next, the other thing that stood out to me is the mention of George Washington and his prayers. How many times he prayed, and there's so many of our leaders that did, but I think it's real important when we gather in public for meetings that we do have prayer. I'm going to go ahead, if you would, if you would join me in prayer right here. Father God, I thank you for the privilege of being in your presence. Your book tells us your mercies are new every morning. Father God, I give you glory and honor. I pray you give our leaders wisdom as they lead where you would have them to go. Father, I pray for our President Trump and his cabinet as they lead our nation. Father God, I thank you for appointing us to be here for such a time as this. I thank you for those who choose to serve you and ask your blessings upon them. Father God, I thank you for the saints and martyrs that have gone to be with you before us. I pray for your book, Father. I thank you for that record that accounts you have. When we stand in a building full of books, I thank you that yours is here. And I pray it be preeminent, it would be foremost, and it would be the foundation for each and every decision made here. Father, I thank you for anointing this board to care for our library. I ask you give them wisdom and discernment as your will for this place as they leave in this office. I ask for your blessings over will. I pray for John. I pray over Diana, over Mary, and over Kelly. I pray for your will for our children as they come to this place. I pray they read in here about your love and how precious they are to you. I pray they are safe in this place and they learn about the beauty and wonders in this world that you have created. I ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Next speaker is Ayla, and after that, Dr. Elizabeth Duretashow.
I also loved the seven o'clock meeting. I'm happy I could actually make it speak. And since I've not been able to make it for a while, I just wanted to take the chance to thank you guys, to our board and Will. You guys have brought your hard work, reason, and common sense to the table, and I really appreciate it. It was not so long ago that myself and others were digging into the policy manual bylaws and budgets, trying to get answers for and understand how our library had become more like a microcosm of a small radical liberal subset of our local population rather than an actual representation of Christian county Missouri citizens. During those months and years, you could almost bring a bag of popcorn at times and watch the Christian county library board meetings like you would watch a reality TV show. But you all have restored respect of patrons, even those whom you may disagree with. You have restored transparency. You assume good intentions of patrons who approach you with their concerns. And most importantly, to me at least, you don't govern by just saying, "Well, this is how we've always done things," to absolutely everything, even very open-minded. Thank you, thank you, thank you for that. Ditching an adherence, in particular, to the American Library Association's guidance center policies frees our library from dysfunction and frees us to think critically about what's actually good for our community and our community library. As others have previously mentioned, the ALA has become increasingly Marxist and controversial over the years. So ditching the ALA was the most logical thing you all could have done. The ALA shields potentially rogue and radical libraries across the country from the various citizens who pay taxes to fund them. Even more, the ALA equips these libraries with online toolkits to fight citizens and ideological conservatives under the guise of protecting the continuously morphing definition of censorship. That's not a popular stance for a county that votes 75% conservative. Our country was founded to be run as a small federal government with bigger state and local government, so it just makes sense to break free from the national association's influence over our local policies. One speaker last month gave several examples of associations that are recognized across the country as experts, otherwise known as lobbyists. Much like the other lobbying associations mentioned by last month's speaker, the American Library Association accepts donations from individuals who probably have never even set foot in flyover country here in Missouri. These donors could be anyone, but to name just a few that I've found who have given to the ALA at various times, we have Bill and Melinda Gates, The New York Times, Oprah Winfrey, and the illustrious Michael Moore. Local control obviously is better. The ALA knows nothing about Christian county Missouri beyond the fact that we've been noncompliant with them. And neither do their donors know anything about us. The ALA doesn't want citizen input in our own library. They don't want to, or they want to be the experts, no question asked. So thank you for your efforts to support our independent, free-thinking, commonsense community library.
Our next speaker is Dr. Elizabeth Duretashow, and after that, I don't know.
Thank you for allowing me my three minutes. As must be known, I am Catholic, therefore I will not pray on you, over you, for you, or to you. I will leave that to God, and I give it his grace to prepare me for what I'm about to do. I pray to God that you will prioritize, Lord, our sons and daughters and brothers and sisters who shipped out to the southern quarter to prepare for battle and those who are currently engaged in war. I pray that you realize the ridiculousness of praying to God about our personal ideology influencing ideas that force it upon all of us is exactly the problem. I pray that people who pray realize that they themselves are lobbyists for God and that some of us who put our lives in their hand, in his hands, don't have any appreciation for being lobbying for. For the past two years, we have battled about things that to me have seemed unethical or hypocritical or at least confusing. For example, we don't want anybody telling us what we should be allowed to see, hear, read, and have access to. And yet, people want to make rules and regulations about who we honor, who we pray to, what books we're allowed to have in our community library. We want smaller government, but we want that government to be telling us what books are in control. Wait a minute, let me be clear about that. What government do I speak of? The people who govern the library, which is this board, clearly. I'm sorry that I don't put as much faith in our board to tell me what's acceptable in our community and what values I'm supposed to have. I'm not allowed to put that faith in my federal government, the people I elect, but I'm supposed to put it in the people who are appointed to make the choices about what educational opportunities are available to my children and my grandchildren. Those should be my choices. Of course they are, you say, unless you make them unavailable. Well, as if we said last month, 30% of the books are going to be removed in some way, shape, or form. We have to do it. I don't know if you guys are paying attention or not, but just today, the policy for the state restricting high school and elementary school libraries, public libraries, and schools just had to overturn their illegal restriction of certain material in libraries. We need to pay attention, everybody, and stop telling us what the faith and meaning are.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michael.
Good evening, and thank you again for having time for public comment for this release. So I've gone through the journey of being in meetings on and off over the last couple of years. I heard a lot of comments from people, from the audience, from board members, things going back and forth. We're really a pretty small group here, 25 to 35, maybe 40 people at some times when they're standing only in this room. And I'm not sure, as maybe you mentioned before, that this group ought to be trusted to make total decisions for the patrons of the library and even the board. It's a hard thing to do, to kind of guess what everybody wants to do, what they want to read, things like that. And I just wanted to suggest that maybe you think about running a patron survey where you pick a timeframe and you have an open survey about maybe some of the biggest matters that you're making decisions on to get some public sentiment. And it could be an easy email survey complemented by in-house surveys as people come to check out books and then cross-tab that so you don't have duplicate comments from the same people. But something like that could help you get a pulse, a pulse of the patrons in the library. And it may be many of those people that are checking out books, it's hard to say for sure, but you would have a body of evidence that gives you that insight that the people are looking at. And I think I would volunteer to help with that survey operation. I've done that before with other nonprofits. You could buy you anything else. It doesn't have to cost a lot of money, and I'm sure it could be fit into a budget operation at very minimal cost, probably $500 or less, maybe even including staff time, was a volunteer help. But I think that would be helpful to guide you in decision-making. And you don't want to make it too long if people want to spend their time wisely, but you know, pick out about 10 questions you want some feedback on and get that, and then that could guide you in some of your decision-making. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I was hoping I could applause.
All right. So our first item of all business is the 2026 budget, including updated page scales. So continue your review from prior month. Will, I would feel you before, if you'd like to start us with our office.
Hello, hello, all right. Let's do it. I was going to go very slowly. I have a couple of pictures that are out of my phone. I was going to enjoy. Yeah, a lot of people chipped off. So got to clear up that fence back there.
I'm just going to let Vida go. Hard hit.
We're doing it.
Wonderful.
We're doing it. It's a good thing. Yeah, Nick, just jumping in there over those art. I couldn't put anything in front of Nick, and he's just willing to jump in.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Yeah. Just a lot of good stuff going on. Okay, let's turn this one around. God, this time, I appreciate you.
It didn't do anything.
Right, all right. Okay, so this ought to be the easy part, the page scale. The only difference that we made to this is we brought the bottom number, of course, up to the requisite $15, and then we added a dollar right down the column to each bracket. We also made a couple small changes. We substituted Director of Strategic Partnerships with Associate Director as we reworked that position. And that's it. And so just one dollar more going down the column and one change of title, and that is the page scale. Super scientific. Do you have any questions?
Between Administrator 1, 2, and 3, similar education level, are these based on time served or performance or both?
So right here, you'll have the time of, like, the years of experience, but then also relevant experience.
Sorry, if someone was Administrator 1 and they wanted to bump up, promotion?
Okay, so if they wanted a promotion, they pretty much positioned that at the next level. One of these positions would have to be open, and they'd just have to apply for it.
Got it.
But they're not going to get bumped up in the position that they're in. So they would have to just apply.
That's what we were talking about, job, family versus slot.
Yeah. I would definitely love to talk more about this for the next cycle, for sure. You can see that Administration, Administrator 1 is empty, so there's, we can flatten this. You know, we can flatten this into one or two things. We can make it sort of easier. Those are all things we want to look at for next year.
Do you have any questions?
All right, so our budget process, and let me, so just a quick. It's just going to be better multitasking. I've just learned my own ways. All right, so our budget process this year really began on a bold note with a tall challenge. We were faced with having to raise the minimum wage, of course. I asked administrators and managers to be brave in their cuts, and they were. They, I asked them for a minimum of 3% cuts to their individual budgets, and I think virtually all of them delivered more than that for me, which I greatly appreciate. And because of that, I don't want to be able to lift up our personnel, which I'll expound on in a moment. But we were also able to sort of get our facility maintenance plan as well, which I'll also get to. And our organization will be much more efficient due to these efforts, and I hope to continue improving the process for next year. So moving on, we have our income. So the first line that is left over from a bond from 2020 for the NICS renovation as well as reserves. Thank you, Mary. Thank you for the knowledge of that. We have our estimated tax revenue. You may notice if you're discerning that it's a little bit less than what was approved previously, and that's because the tax that got attached with me and I think the effects of SB 190, we had to take out $22,157.81. So it just, it wasn't too bad. I fear worse than that. Of course, it's probably going to grow over the next couple of years. But for this year, I agree, pretty sigh of relief with that. So then we have fines and fees. We have a lease for, I believe that's where we do the lease for the, I would show Mary. But we put in fines and fees, I believe.
And fines for like what?
Yeah. And we have our estimated state aid. Have that at around 85, just where it is. And then we have estimated grants and donations. I was a little bit conservative with that because we're also figuring out how we're submitting grants. We're kind of approaching it with a team approach that we're collaborating on grants. Dana's working on it right now for summer reading. So I was a little bit concerned, but we'll do, we'll do better than we don't want to. And then, of course, we've got the interest of our accounts. Any questions on that part? That's it. So I do want to make a note, like, last time in the preliminary, I had capital expenses, major maintenance out of line for that. I put that back into buildings and grounds because we split. We split up larger projects into smaller projects, and so that's why we did that. Basically, we talked about doing the parking lots, we talked about doing flooring, and we pretty much split it up into different locations. We are actually, I'm 99% sure that we're doing this part of the parking lot this year now. So thanks to Mary's help and Heath, of course, our Director of Facilities, we are moving forward with getting this part of the parking lot done to keep that off of the 26 budget. And then for 26, we plan on doing this parking lot up here, and we plan on doing the other parking lot as well. So as far as salaries, I'm happy to say that we were able to raise hourly pay $1.30 across the board. Doing it by percent was unsustainable at the higher levels because when you have someone with lower pay going from $13.75 to $15, that would be something like 9%, and there's just no way that we could ever, as much stuff like that. We can't do that. So we just did $1.30 just across the board. And while that compressed pay a little bit, I think it did raise up the lowest paid in a good way. So, and while avoiding salary compression, so I was happy with how that turned out. We also made a stretch where we are upgrading a part-time position in IT to a full-time. And that position, we plan on rolling the custodian records role into. So you'll also see that's why finding the lockers and some other things kind of bumped up a little bit too. So that was a little bit of a stretch that we were able to do because everyone being so diligent about, you know, pretty much going through it, about just defining to comb and taking out what we, what we could. So everyone really want to thank your team for that. And that position, we hope to list it in December to begin January 1st or after because we want that position to start with a new page scale to help, you know, recruit somebody. So that would be the plan for that. So keep an eye out for that job posting on our site. Any questions at this point, or I have to see you all? All right. So as far as our collection goes, we have the book collection for adult flat. I took the youth collection down just a little tick, but that's the caveat that I have a sort of project in mind about targeted donations, asking people for, to help develop, have like special collections. At my old library, for example, we had like a golden books collection that people, I mean, they didn't want like pocket, so, you know, keep them out of something like that in the future this year. So basically, we're kind of trying to diversify where we're getting, you know, where we're getting our books from. Looking for different ways. With electronic collections, we're able to cut back on some of our digital resources, also some of our databases, which you jumped down to the bottom here. So that I kind of put those together in my head. We were able to cut back on some of the lesser used resources. And the one big one that we were considering is Hoobla, but it has survived for now. But it is very expensive, and that might be something that we look to the public for comment on in the future because I do think that should be a shared decision. I think if we list it out, it's 6,500 a month on average. You know, you all get three loans a month. But I will take a moment to just plug once again that the last week of the month, Hoobla always a lot of things for free. That saves us a lot of money, gets you a lot of things to read and use. So, you know, keep an eye out for that, the last week or every month. Hoobla has things to put out for free. I cannot vouch for what they put out. That's, that's all then.
Is this?
Can I vouch for?
Is this something that we can get on the social media and put on blast for the community to take advantage of?
I'm sure we could work that out. Yeah. And I think that we'll, yeah, we'll definitely be pushing that message because it saves us a lot of money. And yeah, in the future, I think we'll look for public comments on, pretty much like, how do we all feel about Hoobla? I mean, I'm generally pro Hoobla, but the reality is, is it's a pretty big piece. So I can go either way. We cut it for now because it's super popular. I will say that with Hoobla, it will always, like, it'll always be popular, and people will always use it to the extent we offer. Maybe I can, well, I will call down this year. Maybe there's a better deal we can work out. I know that other directors throughout the state of Missouri are complaining to them. One of them sent me a survey that a bunch of directors filled out. And so we sent it and said we were thinking about removing ourselves, so maybe that gets somewhere.
How much does that account for that for the budget?
I want to say it's like $8,000 for the year, I think, about 6,500 a month, I remember. So it's, it's a lot. I mean, it's also, it is one of the most popular things. So, it's, it's a lot. I mean, it's also, it is one of the most popular things, but it's a lot. So, I, I think it's, it would be really great to get people's comments on that in the future. And, uh, go from there.
I have a question, though.
Sure.
Does Hoopla provide you with any metrics that you'd be able to evaluate to make a more informed determination of whether or not it's worth making that investment every month?
They, they do and Hoopla will always show itself to be a good investment. Like, it will always be used. It'll always be one of the most popular resources. Uh, I think there'd just be a discussion of, like, how does everyone feel for three loans a month?
I feel a lot different. I believe that's.
Yeah. And, and maybe there, there would be a time, hopefully during a slower month, we can, you know, throw it on the agenda or ask people to comment on it and, and get some more thoughts. Or, you know, obviously, everyone can email me anytime about that.
Because I, I was wondering, like, has the usage of Hoopla gone up because we don't have access to an interlibrary loan database? Like Evergreen or DePasso or whatever the library is gonna decide to do?
To keep it simple, no. I, I don't care. So, I, I think and Hoopla is really popular because it's on demand. Libby makes you wait. Uh, often it makes you wait, not always, but, you know, sometimes there's a book on hold and you have to wait a couple of weeks to get it. Uh, Libby doesn't have, um, doesn't have like TV shows, doesn't have movies. So, Hoopla has all those things. Uh, for the kiddos, Hoopla has like the read-along things that I, I use that with my kids a lot, like, uh, where it has like the words along the bottom. Uh, so, it's just like a lot more dynamic and it's a lot more like on-demand and immediate. So, yeah. It's, um, it's interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you for your concern. Like, where am I?
Maybe downtown marketing and memberships area?
Sure.
Cause you already kind of talked about that one.
Yeah. And, uh, well, here at Hops real quick, we did, um, this continuing USA Today at the NEXA branch for, for this year, uh, the thought being the local papers are most important. Um, we all, or many of us go online for national news. And so, that was just a little nibble for the budget there. Um, of course, if you don't make that decision, you can let me know and, and, uh, I'll agree with that. Our long TV's down a little bit, our youth TV's actually up a little bit. I suspect sometimes people are like me and, and we cut cable back for the day to save money and we realized that didn't really save a lot of money. So, going back to the UTVs, going back to the library, guys, uh, um, but we have, uh, we put some more money into our UTVs, library things, a little bit more money there. Um, hotspots, just a little less money there.
On hotspots, not to be unsolid. Do you have enough? We have?
Twenty-five. We're removing five. And that's the, I believe we're moving five. That's the drop in, um, cost there. And I think that will probably be, I think, a hot spot to a policy standpoint, just to make sure that they're being equally distributed.
And that's a lot of money for twenty hotspots.
Uh, well, we, I think we have more on, I mean, if we do have more to do, then it's possible. I've had a lot of others on do on mine over the last couple of days. This is, it's more than possible that we, we have more. Um, I, I know that we certainly have more that are sort of like, we keep back when, when they rate. So, we do have some on the server. As far as the consortium goes, a lot of that, uh, is paid out to, uh, Spring to the Green. It honestly did a really good job through the years. Helping us get better deals as a smaller system. Um, so, we're very grateful to them and that's where a lot of like our interlibrary loan services come from. Um, you know, which would be in terms of balance and we gather interior libraries, uh, systems through that. Uh, we generally do save some money and so we're, we're thankful to have them as a partner. Already touched on databases. You can see here that the building and grounds went up a little bit. As promised, uh, we rounded more resources into buildings and grounds. Uh, we have money budgeted for roof repairs, not, not major roof repairs at this point, but just to get through one more year, hopefully. Um, HVAC maintenance, uh, something that's been a hot topic. Uh, the parking lots and the flooring. And, um, also some fun things that I think people like. We have like a, a couple hundred bucks, for example, for landscape improvements at Sparta. The Ozark building needs some love, so we're trying to be very creative about that. Um, and also to be creative, we're looking at investing in a power washer, the, the, the way we got that chainsaw, just to help save money on other services. Um, and it's honestly a great stretch that we need to just go out and do some silly thing. So, you know, it's, it's nice when you can power wash something and make it look cleaner. Um, you know, I mean, it started now, so we couldn't really like showcase the parking lot to everybody, but please come back there for the day. You'll find there's less flying spots and it's just a more safety experience for you. We don't want any benders in the parking lot. So, we were very, uh, you know, very focused on removing those, the big bushes and, and stuff that was getting in the way of people seeing each other. Electric chainsaws are even easier. Let's say that.
It was a creative team-building exercise.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, and staff here are just like, you know, they've spent a lot of change, but, you know, they're just willing to give it a go, you know, and just try different things and, um, yeah, we just, we have a lot of fun today. So, um, did a lot of cutting here and at Ozark, uh, took down a bunch of like a street that was sort of breaking apart and stuff. So, every street we take down is a lot of money saved. It's not cheap to, to get these streets removed, that's for sure. Alright, so where we got now? Let's see. Furniture and equipment. We don't really have too much. Alright, so then, um, the bottom payment that I mentioned last time, you can see that represented there, uh, a hundred fifty-seven thousand. I think it would be minimum. I had seen a little bit lower. A lot of stuff just kind of remains. Insurance, it's not really something you can have too much control over, unfortunately. But I think you can kind of just see going down these columns that you'll just see less money spent in any of them. We're taking New York from, from conferences and we're going to put more money into staff pay for everybody to, uh, try to acquire more, um, keynote speakers and stuff like that. And so, we just have mileage only for staff and more travel. Um, then we have programming, we've taken down. But we're also, um, to accommodate that, we're, we're creating a programming group, uh, that promotes collaboration. Um, so we were gonna go up with, tell us all the new ideas. And just gonna see how you're up. Gonna need some new laptops for staff. Any other lines you guys interested in? Again, cause I just sort of saw a line that you guys. Alright, guys, that's pretty much it. That's your, uh, this will be your budget for twenty-six. You like it?
That was, uh, not an easy task as a new, as a new director. So, I really appreciate you and the team's efforts to pull it off successfully and, um, on time and on a budget. Any other questions to report? I have your motion to approve the twenty-two-six budget and updated pay scale. So, would you? Do you have a seat for someone else? I'll second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I got kind of concerned about the hotspots. There's forty-eight of them, twenty-nine dollars. Maybe some of them broke. I don't know. But it feels like, I know that, or I had heard that the hotspots came into play with COVID. We got.
We got a grant during that time.
So, that paid for the devices. The cost is just the subscribership to with Verizon, correct?
Yes.
I just feel like that's out of scope for the library to provide internet utilities at people's houses. I, they can come to the library and get Wi-Fi. I, I just think that twenty-five thousand that are spent in, in a program or something like that.
Well, we did stop five subscriptions. So, uh, I think that's a compromise that we did, uh, you know, stop a couple of subscriptions. I think I don't have a full opinion of the matter. I want to hear more people and what they think. However, there's a lot of hollers around here, a lot of places where people have difficulty accessing the internet and then we want them to be able to access our U resources. So, there are legitimate concerns about the hotspots. And I mean, I, I guess I would take that as another future conversation I have seen with Hoopla.
I think I'm comfortable with that as well. So, I understand it more. Are they on they're in family household? How do you get on the list to have one?
Uh, through the library things. Uh, so, you can go on the website, go to the, uh, front desk. You can place them on hold just like anything.
Undetermined amount of time?
Uh, there is a determined amount of time. Uh, I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, to be, to be fair.
I have a question. Do people have the ability to bring a laptop to the library and connect to the library's Wi-Fi? To utilize it or sort of so that?
Yeah. Yes.
Same with your phone? Can you connect your phone?
Yeah, because I agree with John. I think that's excessive. Um, you know, that's, that's a.
They are popular.
Is, are they popular among many people or is it the same people who are using, utilizing it as their own internet subscriber?
I think there's a decent amount of unique users. Uh, but again, I think that this would be, I, I, I think it's a valid concern, but I think it's something that we would sort of drill into more so. I could ask Charlie to provide, um, you know, the sorts of, uh, statistics for us. Uh, we can make that into a topic.
I'm not sure if right now is an appropriate avenue. Um,
We're, we're under contract as well with Verizon. So, that would have to be looked into also.
But there are five of those subscriptions.
I feel like my overall questions, cause I don't, we're getting called concerns, cause I don't know if I have concerns. But overall questions have to do with contracts on somebody's bigger things and what the bid out process looks like. And I don't think right now is probably an appropriate time to get into it. But I don't, you know, if there's a time prior to voting on the budget.
Okay, well, uh, what questions do you have about the process? I'm sure we could help you with some of it.
Are you?
Or?
I don't wanna put anybody on the spot. So, I don't, I don't.
Okay. Oh, I mean, we, we generally, um, three quotes for over what, uh, Mary?
When we purchased the NEXA building, we renegotiated all the contracts that we could in twenty-three and twenty-four.
Okay.
Thirty thousand dollars is our policy requirement to get our.
Well, again, pointing to the future, Kelly, um, I think it would be great to, you know, just have more conversations about all of it. I mean, I think, um, staff have been really helping this year and I, I think that we can do even better, but I mean, it's a high bar.
And I think a lot of my, it comes from just a lack of understanding around that. Um, the, my specific one right now has to do with the retirement, um, that's provided. Is there a tier option for that, Mary? Do you know?
I'm sorry.
Is that a, um, for the retirement, is that a tier option?
No. It's a, um, we, um, the cup, the library pays all of it and it's just one, one light amount. And we get a new percentage every year based on our balance and our number of employees, full-time employees.
Okay. And then the employees can opt in to do more?
No. No, it's a pension plan from the library. We do have, um, a pre-tax retirement, four-twenty-seven plan that they can, um, buy into if they want. And because we pay all of the loggers, we don't match that.
Okay. And for how many years of service?
They vest at five years, um, and then can't get max, um, distributions until ten years.
Say that for me one more time.
So, they vest at.
For a good example, yeah.
Vest at five years, meaning if they were to leave before five years, they would get nothing.
Okay.
Um, but they can't get the most payout from it if they leave before ten years.
Okay, so at five years, you become eligible?
You become vested.
Okay. And what, what percentage of the, is that a percentage of salary?
No, it's, it's just, well, the, the library pays in a percentage of their salary.
What is that?
And then.
I understand it's.
Right now, for, for twenty-twenty-six, it's fourteen point nine percent. And it's a defined benefit plan, meaning it doesn't matter what the balance is on our account. They get a defined amount when they retire.
Okay.
Is that standard for the industry?
Yes. Not just libraries, all government, state government. State and local.
Um, stop, travel, just from my knowledge, from my background, is that a per mile reimbursement?
Yes. And we use the state's mileage rate. Other questions or discussions on the motion that is on the table? Here we go. We can move to roll call though. We have a motion on the table for approval of the twenty-two-six budget and updated pay scale. Trustee Chris Young?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Nay.
Trustee, your name is to call?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts?
Nay.
I will vote in favor. Motion carries. Alright, the next item of our new business is our manager reports. They're, uh, for the end of your packet if you haven't got them yet. Um, any questions? Otherwise, we can take a knowledge receipt. Alright, here are no questions. We can move to the next item of our agenda. All our, um, speed scrolls, uh, manuals.
I actually don't think we have anything after that as far as, or the fact of the value.
For the fact, yeah.
Perfect.
Alright, the next item on our agenda tonight is trustee update for the Ozarks right now. Dana, I think I would leave the floor on this topic.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much. I, after some consideration, um, I'm announcing that I'm, I'm going to resign from the board effective November thirtieth. Uh, the reason for that is, it's not something I want to go into in great detail, but there's been a pretty significant development in my health. It's pretty serious. And I've got some tough treatment ahead of me over the next few months and I need to concentrate on getting through that and getting better and on keeping my business afloat. And aside from those two things, I, I just don't have the resources to do anything else. And, you know, being on the board is a pretty significant time commitment and my fellow trustees have put in a lot of time. And I am not going to be able. And I am not going to be able to do that in the in the near term. It's been my pleasure and my privilege to serve. It hasn't been easy, you know, I've been doxxed, I've been sued by our own lawyer. But we got through that and I I do not regret it at all. One of the proudest achievements that I that we've accomplished as a board during very long time is that we got Will hired. He's doing a fantastic job. And I hope that everybody will support him going forward. He's a real visionary and I think he's going to do great things for the library. I have met and befriended a lot of great people here. I'm very, very pleased about that. And again, it's been my privilege to serve. There's some of the folks in the audience that I would encourage to apply for this position. It's a lot of work, but there's a lot of people in the audience who've got a lot of knowledge. And I think that some of them would do a really terrific job. So that's kind of the statement I wanted to make. And again, it's, I'm very proud that it served, but but it's, it's, I I've got to stop because I, again, I've got to concentrate on getting better. Thank you very much.
Certainly appreciate your your service and your time and commitment since two twenty-twenty-three. It's certainly been a ride. And we're going to truly value members of this board and this governing body and this team. So thank you. All right, our final item of new business is community feedback, specifically on the public comment policy. I'll introduce this topic. So beginning in December, the board would like to introduce a new process inviting members of the public and the district patrons to share their feedback on a designated monthly topic. We value your individual and family's perspectives and hope that you'll consider participating with us. So our first topic in December will focus on the public comment process itself, the policy, the structure, how it may be better to serve our community, it's going to change over the last few years. If you've been with us that long, different times, different placements in the agenda, different number of speakers being allowed to speak. So we would value your feedback on this process. Can we continue to improve it? Is it working well to meet your needs? And then, as we mentioned, as Will sort of said, you know, like Hoopla, that might be a future topic. It might be valuable. Little hotspots might be a topic for future discussions. So we really value everyone's participation. Often, you all come with notes and research, and that's very important. So we appreciate you all doing that. And we welcome targeted feedback if you're comfortable or interested in a given topic and and would like to target your comments. So if you're open to it, to give public comment on the public comments in December, we will welcome that. You're also welcome to give public comment on any topic, on any month. But if you're open to it, that's the challenge, that's your homework assignment for December. So that's what the new thing we're going to try out. So let us know if there are other things that we might consider in that way. I think Hoopla is a great example for that, so. With no further new business on, I'll just need a adjourned. Can you go over your presentation?